Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to our Town Hall meeting tonight, Building Resiliency During This COVID-19 Pandemic. And as we navigate our way through this pandemic, there is another medical crisis that is coming about very quickly, and that is the mental health of our population. According to a recent survey done by the Kaiser Family Foundation, more than 50% of Americans say they are experiencing negative mental health issues due to the COVID-19 virus. Now, in our program tonight, we'll be sharing resources to support mental wellness and also build a sense of community. We're here to answer your questions that you might have and offer help in managing the impact. But before we get started, for those of you who are on Facebook Live, push your questions through the comments. You will be getting those questions here. And then for those of you who are on the bar, if you would please send your questions through the question and answer function, and we will get to your questions as we can. The resources and phone numbers that are discussed during this meeting will be provided to you as we broadcast through the evening. So first, I'm going to turn it over to Gabe Albernaz, one of our panelists this evening, for an introduction.
Thank you, Susan. It's such an honor to be with all of you this evening. Again, my name is Gabe Albernaz. I'm one of the four at-large members of the county council in the second year of my first term. And I just want to express my appreciation to EveryMind and all of the mental health providers in our community right now who are providing such a vital service. As you said so succinctly, these are unprecedented times, and people are feeling overwhelmed regardless of their socioeconomic status or where they live. But obviously, those that are disproportionately being impacted by the virus are feeling this the worst. And when you add to that the economic challenges, and even the news out of Minneapolis just in the last two days, there is just this overwhelming sense of despair, and we need to step forward and provide all the resources that we have at our disposal and work collaboratively to address it. And I'm confident that we will, thanks to incredible organizations in our community, incredible volunteers, and I'm optimistic that we will weather this storm and come out stronger on the other end. Thank you, Susan. I look forward to answering questions.
Thank you, Gabe. Now, we have Dr. Norvell Coots.
Thank you very much for inviting me to be a part of this. I'm Dr. Van Coots. I'm the president and CEO of Holy Cross Health, and I have two hospitals here in Montgomery County, Holy Cross Silver Spring and Holy Cross Germantown. I'm a physician, but I'm not a behavioral health physician. I'm a dermatologist by training. But my experience around stress and things like this comes from my 36-year career in the military. And in my senior-most position in my portfolio, I had traumatic brain injury, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicide prevention and resilience. So I have dealt with this from a military standpoint, and I can tell you from all the things that I have seen that are going on with people, both inside the hospital and outside of the hospitals, there are some definite parallels to what we would see in military and combat deployments and times of stress. I mean, human beings are human beings, and stress reactions can be very, very similar. So thank you very much, and I look forward to answering questions as well.
Thank you. James Gilmore.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's a real honor and a pleasure to be with this distinguished panel here as well. I'm a social worker. I'm with Montgomery County Health and Human Services. Specifically, I'm a supervisor at the Montgomery County Crisis Center. I've been in the field for about 30 years, working in Baltimore City, Southern Maryland, I guess for almost 20 years here in Montgomery County. I really like the parallels of the post-traumatic stress that the doctor was talking about. We're seeing a lot of that. With stress reactions, it was remarkably very quiet for the first six weeks of the epidemic at the Crisis Center. Our phones were quiet, our walk-ins were quiet, my staff were wondering what happened every day, where did everybody go? We're starting to see it now, where people are coming out with these prolonged stress responses. They're not sure how to cope any longer. They're exhausted, they're fatigued, they're tired of the new normal, or wondering what the new normal is or is going to be. There's a lot of uncertainty as well. So I'm here tonight to talk about that, talk about the Crisis Center, how we can help and contribute how I can. Thank you much.
Thank you. Lisa Luce.
Hi. I want to reiterate what my other panelist said, and thank you to kind of everyone that's organized this. My name's Lisa Luce. I am a therapist in private practice in Bethesda, Maryland. I also sit on the Board of EveryMind, so again, I'm kind of doubly excited to be here and kind of have you all joining us. You know, similar to what James has said, you know, in my practice, the first two to three weeks of this, everything kind of was kind of coming in as normal and seeing clients as normal. But since then, I've really seen a 30% increase in the amount of people seeking out support, both in kind of clients that had already been established with me, but also new clients really needing support and recognizing that the stress is that this is causing them. So recognizing that this is not just a physical health crisis, but a mental health crisis, and a mental health crisis that's going to continue even once we have a vaccine and things get back to whatever that new normal is. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you again for having me.
Thank you. I'll start with a question, just a basic question. You know, what is a person's natural reaction to stress? You know, do everybody have a different reaction or a different way that they handle a situation like this? And what are some of the things that we see? James, you're at the Crisis Center. What are you seeing?
It's a great question. To answer the first part, or the second part, rather, people tend to react very differently to stress. I've been married to the same wife here for 25 years, and we're night and day different. So stressful things happen. I tend to get anxious. I get a headache. She tends to get super quiet and withdraws. We have very different responses to those kind of things. Stress itself is normal, right? We all have stress. There's good stress in our lives. There's marriages or celebrations, there's children, new jobs, which are all very stressful. And then, of course, we have all kinds of negative stress as well. So that initial response that we all have is innate. We're wired that way. It's part of our survival, that fight or flight sense that that kicks in. That's very normal for us to experience that. Then, as stress goes on for a long period of time, well, that's when we start seeing sort of the negative components of those kind of things, which will impact people in varying ways, both emotionally and physically, taboo.
Yeah. Lisa, what are you hearing from your patients? I mean, like you said, the same thing. Things have picked up recently.
You know, what I'm hearing is that more and more the support systems that they had in place suddenly have collapsed. So, you know, everyone has kind of their normal stress reaction and also the coping skills that they've used forever to deal with that. And suddenly, those coping skills are no longer available. So the level of stress is going up, and then there's also this inability to turn to what is known. And so it's really causing this additional stress factor.
Yeah, that's tough. That's, again, you know, I think, and maybe Dr. Coots can answer this. You know, the COVID-19 pandemic kind of took us off guard. It caught us off guard a little bit, and we weren't really prepared to deal with this. But I think the long-term effects of this are going to present themselves in mental health issues. Are we prepared, are our health systems prepared to deal with this as it reveals itself?
Well, I think that we're learning. This is a very fluid situation. Like you said, we weren't prepared for something of this magnitude and something that spread quite this quickly. We also noticed that it was very quiet for the first few weeks, maybe even the first couple of months, really. We're about three months into this now. And now, we're starting to see people show up more in the ED within crisis situations and everything, too. So I think recognizing this, we've been given some new opportunities with telehealth and telemedicine, that we've been able to reach people, get increased access to care. So we are really retooling that, utilize that as a way to get our social workers, psychologists, behavioral health specialists connected with people at home or at work or wherever they are to be able to discuss in real time or send messages back and forth and increase that speed. So I think the new technology that we've been given, and really think about it, telehealth and telemedicine has jumped in years in the last couple of months. So I think we will be better prepared to handle it moving forward, given the new technology. I don't know how many people are going to feel comfortable coming back into any of the hospital settings anytime soon, and we're certainly trying to invite people back in into COVID-free areas. So I think outpatient care and that care through telehealth and telemedicine is going to be the way to capture this moving forward.
Councilmember Albernaz, I know you're on the chair of the Health and Human Services Committee for the council, and you're in daily phone calls, if I understand correctly, on these types of issues. What is happening out in the community from your perspective as a council member with your constituents?
Well, we're seeing very complex and deep-rooted issues. And I'll just give you one illustration that I think is a representation of the kind of story that we're hearing repeatedly out in the community. Our office received a referral from a constituent through a faith-based organization that told us about a gentleman who, for more than a week, had been living in the closet of the building that he was responsible for cleaning. It was a large commercial office building. And this gentleman had to continue to report to work or risk losing his job. But the reason he wasn't going home was because he was exhibiting symptoms of the virus, and he was so afraid that he was going to infect his seven-year-old son, who was severely asthmatic. And so he didn't have anywhere else to go. He couldn't get a test. And the stress that he was feeling, the stress that his family was feeling, the stress that his children were feeling is almost impossible to quantify. And we were able to intervene, and the story actually has a happy ending. We were able to find a hotel for him to stay in the short term. And I really want to credit HHS, who's been doing an absolutely outstanding job in addressing as many needs as they can. And then, we eventually were able to get this gentleman a test. But I think the depth of challenges and the despair that people are feeling, both as a result of the pandemic itself, but now the economic impact on top of that is the perfect negative storm. And when you hear the rhetoric that we're hearing from the federal government, which was already making immigrants in particular feel unwelcome in our community, and now even more so, and we had started to see signs of people disconnecting from government services for fear of some kind of retribution, you know, we're hearing those stories, which are alarming. And then, conversely, we're also concerned about other populations as well, our aging population, which has experienced a tremendous amount of stress and anxiety through all of this, and will continue to do so, even through a vaccine, you know, going to work, going to the grocery store. These are all things we took for granted before, but things that have started to pile up. So there are many layers to this, and I think that our public health infrastructure, and there are some advantages moving forward. I do think telemedicine and telehealth is going to be extraordinarily powerful in the mental health space, but also generally in the public health space as well. So we're doing our best to meet the immediate needs, whether it be through assistance of rent, whether it be through addressing food security issues. And but, you know, we're holding the line on that social safety net, but we know it's going to be challenged, unlike it ever has been before, at least in my lifetime.
How many of you are seeing that the social distancing is affecting the mental health or the not being able to be a community like we once knew? And how that plays into who we are as humans? You know, we are social creatures. We want people around us. And, you know, there are the economic impacts, but then you don't have that support system there to get you through that. It's not there for you. How does that play into all of this? It's got to have a big role. Anybody? James?
Sure, sure. On a personal note, I really see it impacting my mother the most. She turned 75 in a couple of days, and so we're staying very clear of her. And we're doing calls. We've done a couple of drive-bys. But she's extremely isolated at this point, and my mother is a very social person, very active in her church, very active with her friends. And that's been just wiped out all of a sudden, and phones just don't do it for her. Or a text or a video chat, you know, doesn't figure those kind of things out. So I've seen that with her devastate her. And when we drive by the house, you know, she calls me for three days straight. That's the best thing in the world. I can't wait till this is over. Please come back. And not just with her, but we're seeing it with the people we talk to at the Crisis Center. People will say, yeah, I normally could go to my church or my synagogue. I was playing basketball with some guys on Sunday mornings. That's gone. And these are my outlets. These are my coping mechanisms, the way I got support. As we talk about resiliency later, the number one thing for that is this social togetherness, this being a part of. And I'm finding, I think, for some of us older folks that are over 50, that I don't have a Facebook account. I'm not on social media and these kind of things. And so it's really difficult for a portion of us to stay connected. We're just not used to this technology or comfortable with it, or we find it satisfying, you know, as well. So we're feeling very isolated, very alone, which, again, makes the symptoms worse, more prone to mental health problems, more anxiety.
So what are some strategies that you can offer? These, I mean, Lisa, what are strategies that you offer your patients in managing this kind of stress?
So a lot of what we're talking about right now is, one, where can you find connection? You know, to add to what James is saying, as a therapist, I'm constantly preaching that the power of connection, especially in, you know, feeling that you have a purpose and identity. And so, you know, finding other ways to either find connection, to find purpose, to find identity. You know, the other thing I hear so much of is that people are feeling so out of control. And, you know, being able to come back and focus on what do you have control over right now? And can you engage in those activities, right? And it can be little things, like I have control over like what I choose to wear every day, who I choose to speak to on the phone, what I choose to do with my day. And so being able to kind of feel, take some of the power back and feel some of the power that control can have and do those things and engage in those behaviors. The other thing that we do talk frequently about is mindfulness, and really being able to be mindful of what is going on with yourself in the present moment and what you're feeling in the present moment, knowing that if you focus too much on the future or too much on the past, it can bring up so much anxiety and anxiety over things that are out of control and out of your control. So being able to just be in the present moment and seeing is the present moment even the tiniest bit more pleasurable to you than focusing on the future or on the past.
Very good advice. Very good advice. Doctor, with your experience with post-traumatic stress, this is something, you know, that's probably very useful. We're talking long-term here, and post-traumatic stress is something that's very long-term. What do you see as the key for folks getting through something like this? What kind of, you know, techniques or strategies would you recommend?
It's very similar to being deployed in an austere environment. And what we teach the troops when they're there is get into a routine. So sleep, activity, nutrition are very important. Get into an exercise routine and stick with it, you know, try to eat well, eat right. We have a tendency to stress eat this time, you know, binge eat and things like that, and have a routine and regulated period of sleep. Make sure that there are things that will distract you. Mindfulness is one of those things. Watching the rainfall, you know, looking at the sun, breathing, you know, being aware of yourself. But also reading, taking time to read, you know, if you used to play the piano, play the piano again. Take that up. And make sure that you utilize the hobbies and things that you have, you know, this is a great time to sit there. If you build models, build models or do other things, things that will distract you from the isolation that you're seeing. I apologize. That's, we have a terrible doorbell here. You know, all of those things play into it, but recreating a routine. Because when we're off at work, when we're out and about, we have a routine that we follow. And the routine has been disrupted by this stay-at-home, by the isolation. So you recreate a new routine and stick to it. We are creatures of habit, and you can actually function better having created a new routine.
That's also, that's also very good advice. Gabe, you touched on this a minute ago, or did you? I see you want to say something, but I also wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, how about the stress of our political environment? And how, you know, we, the leadership and the messaging that we're getting isn't consistent? And how that can be stressful for us to, we don't know what to believe, what to think, what to do? And how that plays into all of this?
Yeah, I mean, we could spend days talking about that. It's been so dispiriting to see how politics has bled into public health discussion and how something as simple as a mask has become a political symbol, which is so absurd on every conceivable level. And it is disconcerting that at the highest levels of government, we are getting mixed messages. And in fact, we're getting dangerous messages, you know? And so it's unfortunate that local governments and our public health system has had to play cleanup for a lot of the mixed messaging that we are getting out in the community, which is why it's so important that we have trust within our community, within our provider community, as well as our constituents. And the good news is that in Montgomery County, we have had decades of phenomenal institutions, all represented here on this panel, that have built up that trust. And we are leveraging that trust right now. And it is fortunate, I have found in politics, that local politics don't have quite that same level of toxicity as you're seeing at the national level. You do have an opportunity to engage and discuss and have more reasonable and civil discourse, which is something that I ran on, and I know I get along very well with my colleagues in the county council, and we disagree from time to time, but I often don't find us to be disagreeable. And so Howard County had this great bumper sticker a number of years ago, and their slogan was "Choose Civility." And I think that's, those are very good words to live by right now. But just to, I'm not a therapist, and I certainly don't play one on TV, but I have done a few things in my own life that have actually worked pretty well to help make sense of this new reality that we're in. And I have four kids. I'm the age of 12, and it has been challenging, you know, to coordinate the Zoom calls and the class schedules. And my wife is a teacher, and we've just wrapped up the council budget session through the budget process, which took up a lot of time. And what I have found has worked for our family is just managing expectations and acknowledging that you're going to have to adjust rules and deal with a little bit of clutter more so than maybe you're normally accustomed to. Look for things to look forward to. We make a list in our family each week of things that the kids can look forward to. It could be watching a movie. It could be playing a specific game. It could be playing a specific video game. But just something that's practical. And something that I stumbled upon that was actually really useful, The Washington Post has been doing this profile where they follow folks, and they have you record and do a reflection of your day. And so they tracked me for like five days. And so each day, for 10 minutes, I would take a pause and do a, on my phone, I would do a recording, a 10-minute reflection of my day. I have continued to do it for the last two weeks since the session ended. And I have found that to be tremendously helpful in helping sort through. It's, I'm not a great writer, and so it's like a form of a diary, if you will. So there are practical things that we can each individually do, depending on where you are in life, that make a difference.
Interestingly enough, I got in my car this morning to come to work, and I listen to a podcast very regularly. And the podcast today was about mental health. Oh, it was yesterday's podcast, but I listened to it today. And it talked about the Census Bureau data that was just released that shows that some groups are being hit harder than others when it comes to mental health issues during this crisis. And that would be the poor women and children. And I was just wondering if any of our panelists would like to talk a little bit about that and why these particular groups, you know, obviously, we understand those who are economically impacted by this. It's very, very stressful. But, you know, the children who are now having to learn at home, who are used to being around their friends, you know, it's stressful for them. Women who maybe work outside of the home, but now they're home and they're teaching their kids, and they're also, you know, being a mom. And so if anyone could elaborate a little bit on that and maybe some strategies for those folks who are feeling that way, especially those kids, because I think we may see those impacts later on when they're a little bit older.
Yeah, thanks. No, I was just going to say, I have a new teenager and a preteen at home, and they've been doing school, you know, over internet and everything. That's very stressful because it's disrupted my wife's routine, so it's stressful to both of them. But I think one of the things, kids don't really understand the impact of the disease. It's a disease that a lot of people don't understand right now. So specifically to this pandemic, the 24-hour news cycle, the incessant running of the numbers, the tally as it turns over. We actually had to turn the TV off during the day and go to only the kids' channels. I mean, no more watching CNN, CNBC, any of that, because it was just too stressful. And my son was just getting wound up. And as I would come and go from the hospital, he's like, how many people died today? How many more people, how many more people were sick? Are you sick? Are you okay? Are you going to make us sick? I mean, that absolute panic. So you have to do those things to try to disassociate the children from actually what's going on to try to allow them to still be children, to focus on children's activities.
Yeah, that's a good point. James, were you going to say something along those lines?
Very similar, and I wanted to just kind of reiterate something the councilman mentioned as well. I think he talked about lowering expectations. I remember one of the first things we discussed at the Crisis Center with the supervisors was we need to give our peers, our people we work with, a lot of space, a lot of patience, a lot of leave. Because this is all new. This is all very unnerving to folks. And kind of saying, look, you're here. You made it today. Great. I'm glad you're here today. And thinking about children, I have three children as well. They're all doing various Zoom education, and they're all having very, three distinctly different experiences. They're all very different. And all three of my children are responding differently. For my daughter, it's the most difficult. She's the most social of the three. And for her to see people on the video chat and not be able to touch somebody or hug somebody is driving her crazy. And she's more irritable. She's harder to get to bed at night, and she's struggling the most. My boys are like, oh, well, you know, I don't have to deal with that teacher today. I'm happy. You know, for them, they're loving the Zoom experience. To kind of answer your question, as far as the most vulnerable populations are getting hit harder about this, that's always the way it is. Whenever there's a big change, when there's a big challenge, people that are, that are just kind of barely hanging on already and just barely making it, it impacts them much, much harder. You know, I talked to a lot of my peers. I have, a lot of my peers are in private business. My family owns restaurants and these kind of things. And to see the impact that they're going through is devastating. They had zero income at this point, and seeing them barely, barely hang on. And I can see their moods are changing. I see they're withdrawing, not talking as much anymore. So it's hitting all of us in different ways. And that's so hard, because yet, at some days, where my household may be very bright and cheery, we're getting along well, but then I talk to my brother-in-law, and they're, you know, barely hanging on. His daughter was studying in Italy when his first broke out, so they had all the anxiety. Can't she even get home? She made it home on the last plane. And so just seeing these different reactions really reminds me, we need to be empathetic. We need to be understanding. We need to be patient with people. We need to be available to people. However that is that we can do it, whether it's professionally through the Crisis Center or a mental health center like that, or as a father, as a brother, a son, a peer, a councilman, whatever we can be, we need to be there for people and offer as much support as we can and patience, lots of patience.
And to add on to that, I was going to say, you know, to speak to kind of the mothers who are having to both work their job they're getting paid for and then their job as a mother, to be able to say, you know what, today I did good enough, right? And that has to be okay, right? No one's trying to be the perfect parent right now, but just to be good enough and to let that be good enough.
I like that. That's great. We do have a question that's come in from Tony D., and he is asking what resources are available to individuals who may not have access to predictable routines, resources, or environmental security? So that might be a good one for Gabe, possibly. Do we have resources who don't have, that we can talk about for folks that don't have predictable routines, resources, or environmental security? I'm not quite sure what that means, but just, you know, what kind of resources do we have out there from the county for these folks?
Well, environmental security could mean a lot of things, so I'll tackle it from a couple of angles. One, the county is recently implemented One, the county is recently implemented a new rental assistance program for those people whom are concerned that they're not able to afford their rent. The county does have resources available that people will be able to draw down from if they qualify. And if they call 311, the county's central phone number, they will be redirected to access some of that rental assistance program, which has been supplemented with some federal aid, and so there is some additional help there. And as far as help with the routine, there are a lot of really great free resources available online right now. There are gyms that are providing free yoga classes, exercise classes. The Montgomery County Recreation Department is providing free classes for children. There are people that are doing free music lessons. And so there is a lot of high-quality programming and content that people can access right now in really an unprecedented fashion that may help with those routine issues and to be able to get some help with some mental health and wellness, and some overall mental wellness.
Yeah, we're really lucky here in Montgomery County. And also, folks can call 311, and that's another good place if they're looking for information. And those folks might be able to be directed to some other avenues to get the support that they need. But we are really lucky here in Montgomery County, and I know the council has been a big supporter in helping through this crisis monetarily. I don't know, Gabe, I'm sure that we'll be back at the table seeing who might need what in the future as we keep going through this, is that not correct?
Oh, that's absolutely correct. So I think we are, we received the first round of funds from the federal government. It was $183 million. Now, that has to take us through December. But we are hoping, and you talk about the political environment, we are hoping that the bill that looks like is gonna make its way out of the House will be passed by the Senate, probably not in the same form. That will likely be the final phase for the foreseeable future that local jurisdictions will be able to draw down from. But nonprofit providers will also be able to apply for those funds as well, and so will businesses. And so we're waiting with great anticipation that that bill will pass, because we do know that we're gonna need additional resources. But the county has been aggressive in tapping into its reserves and rainy day funds. We've appropriated $53 million to date within this fiscal year to help in a variety of categories. And we are going to be introducing another round of support specifically targeted to youth. There is a division with the great Department of Health and Human Services called the Street Outreach Network, which works directly with highly, highly at-risk youth. And there are substantial challenges with domestic violence and a number of other issues that children are having to absorb and deal with as well at home. And so there has been a growing need to support youth who are in that kind of a situation. And so we will be appropriating funds in the near future that will be administered through the Street Outreach Network, but other providers will be able to access.
Lisa, I have a question about, about going back to the children. We were talking a little bit about this earlier. My daughter is an elementary school teacher, and she teaches seven-year-olds, and they have a Zoom class every day. And sometimes when she gets done with her class, she comes and says, you know, "So-and-so was crying today," or, you know, "So-and-so wasn't there today," or "So-and-so can't understand how to use the system to turn their assignments in." And these kids get very, very anxious about, you know, their new life. It's different for them, that's not what they are used to. They're home with their parents all day long, and they don't know what to expect. So I would imagine that some kids who already experience anxiety might be having more anxiety. How do we, how do we help those little ones get through this?
You know, fortunately for little kids, they still believe that their parents have all the answers and are always right. So parents have a lot of power and the ability to help and ability to comfort their children. And to be able to, to, you know, to say to them, like, you know, "We're all gonna be in this together, we're gonna be here for you. We love you, if you have concerns, keep talking to us." You know, I would never want a parent to lie to their child, but, you know, to let their child know that, you know, that "we're in this with you, and we're going to be here." When thinking about how to talk to children about this, you know, there's kind of age-appropriate ways to do it, you know, for kids in different age groups. And so thinking about, if you're a parent, thinking about your child and what's appropriate for your child, and then kind of gearing the conversation to their age and sharing with them what's important for them to know. But more than anything, it's important for children to know that their parents are there.
Yeah, absolutely. And Dr. Koots was talking a little bit about how he's changed his lifestyle at home to sort of accommodate that anxiety with his children. And that would be something I would guess you might recommend to your parents in that regard, if that's what's happening with the news and all of that at home.
Yes, you know, similarly to what Dr. Koots said, turn off the TV, right? That it doesn't need to be on 24 hours a day. Children don't need to be seeing all of that information, and information that they really don't understand. And so instead, like I said before, it's having parents translate that for their child.
Dr. Koots, what should somebody do if a family member, or a friend, or a colleague, or somebody in the community comes and says that they, they're struggling? What would be the advice you would tell them? What would you tell them to do?
You know, first, I'd find out if they have any contacts with any of the behavioral health resources or anything that are out there. But if someone just came and asked me and said, you know, "What do I do?", I would say, you know, if it's not them directly, if it's someone in their family, I'd say, you know, "First of all, talk to them, listen to them, you know, reach out to people." This is sort of the resilience building that we, as human beings, can help each other with. Sometimes it's just being a sounding board for people. Sometimes, some people don't want to talk, they just want to be around someone, or, you know, just share some space with them. So those are some of the things that I would recommend.
Okay. We have-
I would add really quickly to, just to that, I think, you know, this, as we said earlier, cut us all off guard. And so nobody knew quite how to handle or process this. But I think one of the best practices that I've observed, that if, God forbid, there is another spike and we have to go back to the stay-at-home orders that we're gonna begin lifting on Monday, one of the things I've read about are, some families have selected a reasonable amount, usually one or two other families, that they have formally forged a bond with. Families whom they know are also adhering to the guidelines and rules, and it could be members of your own family. But I think social contact and having the ability to share in this experience with other people is so important. And so I do think if this happens again, you know, we did what we were told to do. You know, we barely went out, we celebrated my parents' birthday through a window screen. And so I think that, you know, we will need to continue to socially distance, but if we select folks within that first concentric circle, I think that is something we'll have to analyze moving forward, because I think there are great benefits to being diligent, but having that social network, which I think can help with the coping.
Okay. We have another question that came in from Mary Patrizzo. And she says, "As a geriatric care manager in Montgomery County, it concerns me about the hundreds of older adults who have been on lockdown in nursing homes and assisted living for the past three months with very contact with family and limited activities. How can we be prepared to help them emotionally when things open up? This could be several months from now." Would like to take that. Lisa, maybe you?
My immediate reaction was, like, exactly, kind of like, "How can we be prepared? That's such a huge question." And I think it's really just to be there and to validate their experience and know that this has been such a hard time, and so much hurt, and so much pain and loneliness, and just to be there to listen.
James, are you, are folks from the Crisis Center coming in telling you, "I can't, you know, see my parents, they're in a nursing home, and I can't, I don't know how they're doing"? Are you hearing any stories like that? Because I can't imagine how that must feel.
We certainly are. And again, back to the whole idea, but we are a community, we're a family. That's where we get a lot of our innate support and our strength from, and that's taken from them. Like, when I was first talking, I was talking about my mother, who's, you know, she's not in a nursing home, she's in her own home, but she's alone in her own home, is having, I don't wanna say similar experience, that is not fair at all. But I can see that firsthand, what she is going through with there. We do speak to a fair number of folks calling from the nursing homes. And while there cannot be face-to-face contact right now, but just cannot be, there can be plenty of verbal, over-the-phone contact. You know, one of the easiest ways for us to help you, anybody at the Crisis Center, is to call us. We take over 7,000 incoming calls a year, and the phone is answered by a live therapist. You don't go through a switchboard or anything of that nature, and there's somebody there talking immediately. The other thing we're trying to do, we're trying to have folks get creative, having grandchildren send care packages, send photos, little videos. Some of the grandparents are pretty good with the phones, or better than I am, a lot of them are. But if they're not, you know, something tangible they can hold on to goes a long way, less than know that they're not forgotten, they're not alone, they're not lost.
I will mention that as we're talking, all of these resources that we've been talking about are being put up in the chat for the folks who are part of the webinar, for the folks who are on Facebook Live. So if you're looking for any of the resources that we've been talking about tonight, they are right there for you. And please use them, that's what they're there for. Dr. Koots, talk a little bit about the partnership of the hospital in the community with the government and all these other nonprofits. Why is it important for all of you to stay connected through this, even though you're a private entity?
You know, I'll tell you, one of the unintended consequences of this is more unification and unity between the groups that are operating. I mean, I can just say, amongst the six hospitals that are here in Montgomery County, we are more united than ever before, even though we had an organization called Nexus Montgomery that brought us together. I mean, we're sharing information, we're sharing resources. Other groups that are often affiliated with us, to include, you know, faith-based groups and things like that, we have increased our bonds with them, because we're all going through the same thing at the same time. And I think that's what's important to recognize, that while each of us is going through our own experience in our own home, we're all going through this same experience together. It's a shared experience. So that commonality of sharing the experience is actually bringing us together in closer bonds. And I'm an optimist, because I think on the other side of this, in the paracovid or the post-covid period, we are gonna have really great working relationships out there built on what this stressful situation, what this very unique situation has brought to us.
Can you talk a little bit about the importance of intervention in these types of situations, mental health situations? Because there is talk out there that all of this, you know, could result in a rise in overdoses, suicides, and, you know, people abusing substances, alcohol use. You know, how important is it that we get to these folks early to stop that?
No, I think, I think it's very important. I think, you know, one of the things, there are probably three bands out there. There is the average citizenry that are doing the stay-at-home, that have a certain type of stress, and they're gonna have a certain re-entry into whatever the normal life is, or the new normal. And then there are the patients that have been hospitalized with COVID-19, and those who've been on ventilators. They actually will have a post-traumatic stress disorders, or similar disorder. And then there are the healthcare providers who don't quite have post-traumatic stress, but they, we're kicking around a term now, just, we're kind of making it up, but pandemic-associated healthcare stress, that some people like to call compassion fatigue or burnout. I think it's a little bit more complex than just compassion fatigue and burnout. So really, there are three very distinct types of, I think, behavioral health issue that we're gonna start seeing in the general population. There are some overlaps in some places where they do cross, but we have to be able to recognize those things early. The one thing about it is if you don't validate, if you don't have self-validation, and you can't validate who you are, what you are, in this new normal, you're out of your normal situation, you will turn to things like drug or alcohol, you'll self-medicate. And so really, being able to help people re-enter the world is very important. We see that in the military. When we come back from a deployment, we have about, we deliberately give them 30 days post-deployment to reintegrate into the world. Because if they're thrown back into it too fast, then they have a tendency to withdraw. Their validation, what they were just doing is, you know, no longer important. And then they have a tendency to self-medicate with drugs and alcohol, too. So, you know, a lot of what we learned in the military, we definitely can apply to the situation that we have now once we start to reopen and return to some semblance of normalcy, or this new normal post-covid.
And I guess, I guess one thing I would say is, I think folks have to understand that through this, it's okay to say you're not okay. It's okay to ask for help, and I think there is always that stigma with being able to ask for help if you are suffering from any kind of a mental health situation, a drug abuse situation, or anything like that, you know, you're not alone. And I think that's a really important message to get out there.
Right.
James-
Absolutely.
Yeah, James, when you have folks, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 that's quite all right.
I was just gonna say, James, I know you take walk-ins at the Crisis Center. Is this a frequent thing that you see with folks who are dealing with other effects of their mental health illness? With, through substance abuse, possible suicide, those types of things?
We haven't seen an increase yet. I mean, we, I'm thinking that's probably another three to four, five weeks away, where people do get reintegrated and kind of come back out. As I said earlier, it's pretty quiet. You know, our walk-in numbers are down, our phones are down. People are still kind of isolating and hunkering down, which is gonna have a long-term impact as well. Historically speaking, at the Crisis Center, yes, that's what we see day in and day out. People struggling with thoughts of wanting to harm themselves, people with depression, anxiety. And, you know, people walk in 24/7, seven days a week, and receive help there. So we are there, we haven't closed our doors, we never closed our doors. But my staff are still working full-time, and they're there in place. So if you are listening or know somebody who needs some help, please send them our way. We're a free service. We don't worry about insurance or anything of that nature. And, you know, all my therapists are trained, you know, 15, 20 years experienced therapists, they're good folks there, and we're here to help the folks here in Montgomery County.
Lisa, how often do you tell your patients it's okay to ask for help? And what advice do you get them to get past that, you know, feeling of being less than if they do ask for help?
Well, it's a kind of unique situation, because so many people that I see have already asked for help because they're already seeing me. But we will talk about the, like, the stigma that they feel around mental health. And oftentimes, it's then going and being part of, being part of groups of people who are also struggling can help with that stigma. One of the things that has come out of this is that there's more and more, you know, online resources. We talked before about, like, music classes and different things that the county and the state are offering. But there's also so many more online mental health resources. So if you're someone that is struggling with a mental health issue and you're afraid to ask for help, you are able now to really go on the internet and find a group to join, and just start talking to other people who may be experiencing something similar. And in that sense of community, the stigma and the shame oftentimes kind of fades away.
Yeah, that's, that's great advice. We're gonna be wrapping up-
Susan, may I interject just real quick? The idea of telling folks that it's okay to get help, one of the ways I've found the most effective is if we can model that. Is so if my children can see me reaching out to my wife and saying, "Hey, I'm struggling with this," or if I can call my friend and say, "I'm having a hard time," I'm giving them permission now to open up and to talk. And so if we can role-model that, give examples of that, or if we're concerned about somebody, we can reach out to them, we don't have to say, "Are you all right?" We can talk about ourselves, say, "Hey, I had a tough day, I'm struggling with this." If we can be vulnerable, and we can open the door for others as well.
That's a great point, I like that a lot. And on the flip side, also showing your kids that you're there to help others, you know, through these things as well. So I think, you know, a lot of lessons can be learned from all of this. But we have a few minutes left, but in these last few minutes, I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know, suggestions and ideas on how we can help the community build resiliency in the coming months. What should we be doing as, in our positions here, to do that for our, for our community members? I'll start with you, James.
One of the first things we kind of talked about earlier in this broadcast was the idea of delivering services in a different way. You know, Zoom formats, telehealth formats, those kind of things. And so we are working diligently to get up to speed on that. We're adding extra computers, we're having our staff take extra trainings to be prepared for folks who are not gonna wanna come in, you know, into the office and see us face-to-face. But also to understand as professionals, there's limits to those kind of things. I mean, maybe I'm the old school, but, you know, body language tells me 60% of the story, you know? And so I can't catch that on the- And so I can't catch that on the telehealth. So getting my staff up to speed on that, getting them comfortable with those kind of formats is going to be really important that we're there to help those kind of folks. The other thing we can do is get the message out that there is help here. You know, Lisa mentioned stigma. That's always, historically, has always been a stumbling block for us. But with something this big, maybe we can take a step and get rid of some of this stigma and saying it's natural to have some of these anxious moments, these depressive symptoms, these thoughts. That doesn't mean life is over. That means you're human and you're being impacted by something. So we can get that message out there to folks, get people talking and pointing in different directions to get help. And I love the idea of the online supports and online help as well. Things are changing.
Very good. Dr. Koots, what would you say?
I think one of the biggest things, similar to what James just said, is messaging. The messaging is important. You don't hear a lot of it, you don't see a lot of it. I think now is the time to start to message, you know, it's okay to not feel okay right now because most of us don't feel okay. And sort of that shared experience coming together. Well, people will say, well, you know, I have been feeling pretty weird or I have started drinking a little bit more and things like that. I mean, the stories will come out. And if we do it in the form of stories, you know, we are people who live by stories. And so, but we need to do it. There need to be commercials about it. I mean, there needs to be a real messaging campaign to get out there that it's okay not to feel okay right now because this is such an odd time. And so that would just be my, and then the modeling piece is absolutely true. In the military, we got over a lot of the stigma by having the highest-ranking generals come out and say, you know what? I have PTSD too from 15 combat tours and things like that. So we've got to get those messages out. It's all about the messaging, how we tell that story and how we make people feel comfortable not feeling normal.
Are we getting a little better though? Do we think we're getting a little better about that as far as PTSD and all those other things go? This is a whole different story, but are we becoming a little bit more accepting of this and as we move ahead?
Oh, considerably so. The stigma is going away and people are coming out and telling their stories. I even tell my story. They said, I have mild PTSD from my year in Afghanistan. And this is how it manifests and this is how it comes back. And so people are more open to share it because it's not something that's hush-hush. It's not something that's seen as shell shock and, you know, all those terrible old terms or malingering and things like that. We had to go through and work through all of those processes in the military to bring it into the light and say, hey, everyone experiences it. It's okay to feel that way. No one leaves combat the same person that went into combat. Nobody is going to leave isolation, social isolation and quarantine the same person that went in. And we have to realize that we're all a little bit different. We're all fundamentally changed and we have to be willing to accept that.
Yeah, that's good. Lisa, I was always told growing up, it takes pain to grow. Now, that's pretty blunt, but I mean, is that sort of, is that like a motto that you go by that these types of things, like the Dr. Koots was just saying, that, you know, it's okay and this is how we get through life?
Yes, you know, I think to go off of kind of the model that you were told growing up, it's being able to recognize where those growth opportunities are. So looking back at this, you know, in a few months, you know, years from now, saying, what did I learn from that experience? What did I learn about myself? What did I learn about my family, my support system? And what did I learn about my community? You know, I think as part of this, in terms of our community and building resiliency, it's, you know, being able to practice, you know, empathy with ourselves, but also empathy with others and recognizing that, you know, everyone really is just trying to do their best and you don't know anyone's story. So being empathetic to everyone that you see, but also being empathetic to ourselves.
Yeah, we need to remind ourselves of those things. And Gabe, father of four, council member, all kinds of things going on in your life, building resiliency in the next several months going ahead, how would you explain doing that?
Well, from the council perspective, I think that we need to make this among our highest priorities moving forward. And we can do that a variety of different ways. I think we're going to have to make greater investments in supporting the organizations and the departments that are on the front lines providing these critical services so that they have the support that they need to be able to do their jobs as effectively as we need them to be able to do their jobs. And so the council is going to have to work diligently on providing the level of support necessary. And, you know, we have hundreds of thousands of students that are going to be returning to classrooms in the fall in some form or fashion. And we don't know what the definitive impact has been on them. We know there's going to be a significant learning loss, but the issues related to the social and emotional learning are going to be profound. And so we're going to need to make a great investment to help ensure that we support those organizations. And long-term, we are going to have to look at technology solutions, but also invest in making sure that staff are trained in a culturally sensitive way to address the unique needs, not just from an ethnic or cultural standpoint, but also from an age standpoint, from an ability standpoint. We haven't talked a lot about families with a child or a family member with a disability who are experiencing tremendous stress right now at home because of a lack of provider support. So I'm confident that we are going to make this a priority, that we will make those initial investments. And on a personal front, it just underscores the point that none of us can do this by ourselves. We all need help, whether it's through our families, whether it's through our friends, whether it's through our colleagues and our extended networks and even our communities and neighborhoods right now. We must remain together and diligent and support each other and live by the golden rule. And if we do those things, I think we're going to be okay.
Well, that will be our last word. And I want to thank each and every one of our panelists this evening for some fantastic information and insight on how to deal with this as we move forward. And as I said, we have plenty of resources that we provided you throughout this broadcast. Please use them, they are there for you. We have a very wonderful community with lots of great resources to offer. So for everybody here tonight, I want to say thank you very much for joining us and have a good evening.